All right, it's six o'clock. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Can we get a roll call, Anne?
Commissioner Gill is absent, so we have Commissioner Jamu.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
And Chairperson Condit.
Here.
Is there anyone on the commission that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none, move on to citizens' communication. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in the Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the serious planning commission or not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone in the public that would like to give public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, go ahead and close citizens' communication. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. Is there anybody on the commission who would like a consent item pulled? Seeing none. Anybody in the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No, I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item one and two on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve one and two.
I'll second that. Can we get a roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Chairperson Condit.
Aye.
Commissioner Jamu. And Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Okay, go ahead and move on to public hearings. Item three. Conditional use permit for proposal of the GrubHub on Service. Turn it over to city staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Maybe I could just fill in real quick before we jump into the substance of the item. This is Tom Romley, the city attorney. Can you guys hear me?
Good, Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some context since we had some things come up with these CUPs and with a referral item that we're speaking to later in the meeting. But it looks like the city needs to have the Planning Commission make a decision on these CUPs for the due process rights of the applicants. And if they, if the city, if they're appealed to the city council, that would give the city council an opportunity to to make a decision. However, the referral item is still on the agenda and you'll be able to prompt the city council to review the current ordinance. So I just wanted to provide some clarity there. It didn't quite go exactly the way we thought it would, but that's the situation.
All righty, thank you for the clarification.
All right. Good evening, Commission. My name is Kelsey George. I have not met with you guys before. I am the new contract planner. So I do look forward to getting to know everybody and presenting for you and answering any questions. And I'm excited to start with these two CUPs. So the first one on the agenda is the Sangara GrubHub project. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a mobile food vending parking facility, or kind of colloquially known as a GrubHub, on a 0.83 acre portion of a larger 1.36 acre site. The mobile vending parking facility will have covered seating, a game area, two container restrooms, and 10 food truck stalls with the associated parking. The access for the project will be off of a shared driveway off of Service Road. So here is the subject property. To the north is vacant land for commercial uses. To the south is Service Road and then residential uses. To the east is a TID canal with more road and more residential uses. And to the west is a car wash and gas station. The project site has a general plan land use designation of HC for highway commercial. A quick-serve restaurant-type use like the proposed GrubHub is an allowed use in the HC land use designation. Figure three, which is in your staff report, shows that the site is surrounded by regional and highway commercial. So this corner is primarily more heavier commercial uses. The project site is also designated highway commercial within the Mitchell Road corridor specific plan, which is intended to provide for and promote concentrations of those administrative professional retail commercial and service commercial uses. This facility provides quick and convenient food options for those individuals passing through series and along State Route 99, as well as to local residents traveling through the corridor on a daily basis. Moving on to the zoning designation, the project site has a highway commercial zoning designation. So land use and zoning have to be consistent with each other. The zoning district is intended to provide for and promote a concentration of administrative professional retail commercial and service commercial uses. So the use conforms to the objectives, but the zoning district is silent on whether GrubHubs or these types of facilities are permitted. However, there is a separate mobile food vendor ordinance within the city's municipal code that does allow mobile food vendors in the HC zone district, but requires that they obtain a CUP when there's more than one food truck on a site. There is one item that needs to be discussed related to the development standards for these facilities. The ordinance itself is silent on the number of parking spaces. However, my understanding is the approval of a GrubHub on Farm Supply Drive last year in October. The Planning Commission set a parking standard precedent of 2.5 parking spaces per truck. And this proposed facility has 10 trucks and 25 parking spaces, which is consistent with that previous direction. So within your staff report and the approved plan set is the landscape plan, which shows that the portion of the parcel not being used will be landscaped per city standards, since the site is not proposed to be subdivided. Any improvements needed on Service Road will also be required given that the project is a single parcel. Environmental review, so the project was reviewed pursuant to the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as SEQA. And it was deemed to be exempt subject to Section 15332 for an infill development project. Because the project meets all of the criteria of SEQA guidelines, it's consistent with the general plan. The development is within city limits. The project has no value as habitat for endangered species. And the project can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. At this time, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission do find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15332 for infill development and adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the Sangara GrubHub and associated parking, seating, game area, and restrooms at 3125 East Service Road, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation, but I'm available for questions and so is the city attorney.
Thank you, Ms. George. Anybody on the commission have questions? Is the applicant here? Is he on Zoom or? Okay. Any questions right now from commission? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public.
Shirley Rogers, Series. My concern is the word GrubHub. I don't understand. That's a delivery service out of Chicago owned by Wonder. Are these food courts designated as a city's food courts? Or is this connected with GrubHub in Chicago?
So there is no connection to GrubHub. I think it was a term that was catchy and caught on. The formal term for these are mobile food vending facilities.
Then GrubHub should be removed because it is trademarked and somebody will get sued, either the person or the city for using that word. Also, one of these places is going to have a kitchen, I believe. Is that correct?
That's the, yes, that's the next item.
The second one. Okay, because that's a ghost kitchen, which means if I had a really good recipe for chicken, I could go there and I could cook my chicken and I could have it delivered by a delivery service. So it's interesting. A lot more needs to be known about these permits before they are given out. I don't think, and I think the city should decide what they call food courts, because if they're just randomly using a GrubHub, it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Warren, City of Series. I understand on this particular item, you probably are going to vote yes. Just because it fits the round peg in the round hole qualifications. It's allowed because of the zoning and the ruling. But the number of trucks, food trucks, that are ultimately going to be within our city is rapidly approaching the number of about 150. If you consider the number that are already in place out at the El Remito location on Crow's Landing Road, and then the existing GrubHub food court on Service Road and Farm Supply Drive, the number that are allowed to be remotely located around town on private businesses in the City of Series, and of course, these two that we're talking about tonight. So I really, I really would encourage a no vote just until the city council will give some direction to you folks on the number that they want to allow within the city. I know that's probably not a possible thing to happen tonight because of the current situation, but how does this thing get back to the city council? You folks were supposed to have an agenda item at your next meeting so you could discuss it and send a request back to the council. But obviously, that hasn't happened. And why, I don't know. And I think it's something that you need maybe to discuss this evening as to find out what happened. But I just think there's too many and there's not enough direction from city council to the number in regard to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, I have Heron Sangara. Has his hand raised? That's the applicant. Mr. Sangara, go ahead. I've unmuted your mic.
Hi there. Yeah, thank you. I'm just, just want to make everyone aware that I am here as applicant's representative and I am available. I just wasn't able to raise my hand earlier when it was, when you guys asked if I was here.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Thomas, if, is there any legality to the public comment about GrubHub? Do you happen to know, is this, if, if the individual business is deciding to use that phrase, is the city liable in any sense, or is it strictly just the applicant?
Well, I I couldn't speak to that directly, but I, but because there, it's kind of being used in a colloquial way and the city's not intending to infringe on the, the brand. I don't think that there's a huge legal risk to the use of it. It would be better if we used mobile food cart, park or something like that, but I think that we can probably move forward with GrubHub for the time being and in the future we'll do our best to avoid using it.
Is that on the city's behalf or is that on the applicant?
You would, I would believe it to be on the applicant. But I think it would just be best practices if the city picked some other term for this. But I, like I said, I think the liability is fairly low here.
Okay. My other question would be in regards to, not for you, Thomas, but maybe city staff. With the food vendor current ordinance, does it specifically say or mention GrubHubs, or is it?
So I could speak to that if you like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, it doesn't call, GrubHubs are not used in the municipal code. What this process is contemplating is a section 5.10.040, which permits the mobile food vendors. And within that section, there allows for CUPs to be issued for properties where more than one vendor is located. And so for a little bit of clarity as to what that means, is those, the vendors on that property with the CUP do not hold city administrative permits to be a mobile food truck vendor. And so they can't leave the, the site and other vendors can't come into it. So it's, it's, they're sequestered from, from both, from the administrative permits. But this is just coming from one provision within that permitting code.
Okay, that makes sense. So who, how, how many slotted food trucks would we have in the city with the addition of these two items?
The, the, we offer 20 use permits for mobile food trucks. I believe we've already issued a conditional use permit for 10 food trucks. I haven't confirmed that number. And then this, the two conditional use permits before you would add additional 30 food trucks. So you're looking at about 60 food trucks permitted by the city. Only 20 of those, 20 of those are standalone. The rest would be located in the parks. And now there's some uncertainty as to the regulations and, and the moving around in between parks and things like that. But that's what the ordinance currently says.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other questions from the commission?
Just, you know, to kind of make a statement on, on these GrubHubs, right? I wasn't here last meeting, but one thing I've noticed around, you know, the whole city and counties, right? Like, these mobile food vendors or GrubHubs, right, it gives people that are trying to start the business a way to kind of get in easily, right? It's an easier startup cost, lower risk for them, and a lot of them eventually start opening restaurants when they're successful. So it is good leeway and inchway for business owners to kind of progress in the food industry as well. With that, I'd like to motion to approve the conditional use permit under SEQA and adopt the resolution approving it for Sangara GrubHub.
Second?
Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Jamu?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? And Chairperson Condit?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Okay, move on to item four. Additional use permit for the Truck Stop GrubHub and Outdoor Music Venue on East Whitmore.
Good evening again, Commissioners, and I do apologize. I know a lot of this is redundant and material that we've heard before. But we're going to get through it again. So tonight, for your consideration, is the Truck Stop GrubHub and Outdoor Music Venue project. So for this one, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a mobile food vending parking facility or a GrubHub on approximately 2.94 acre lot. This facility will also have an outdoor music component, which is a part of the CUP request that came in when they submitted their application. The property is located on East Whitmore Avenue and is shown on the screen above. This is a primarily industrial area. To the north is a trucking yard with other industrial uses. The south is East Whitmore Avenue with residential uses on the south side of Whitmore. To the east and west are vacant property that are zoned for industrial. The project site has a land use designation of LI for light industrial. Typically, the light industrial land use designation is for light and heavy commercial uses like manufacturing, fabrication, construction yards, wholesale uses, lumber yards, and others similar industrial and heavy commercial uses. However, incidental employee serving retail and services may also be permitted. While this use is larger than what would be considered incidental, the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance allows these facilities to be located in industrial designated land. And a precedent has been set by the Planning Commission with the approval of the other facility in a LI designated parcel. And because of that, staff has found the general plan conformance finding for this site. The zone district for this site is PC 29. At this time, staff cannot locate the original PC 29 zoning documents. Historically, an underlying PC zoning designation usually matches the land use designation, which means that the same use is allowed in the PC zone, should be the same for those allowed in the LI designated land. Additionally, the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance states that mobile food vendors are allowed to operate in PC zones and have a general plan land use designation of industrial. Since this site has a light industrial land use designation, there is an implied notion that a GrubHub and music venue would be permitted. The applicant prepared a view shed diagram, which shows that the proposed setback of the building and the landscaping both create privacy between the residential yards and the project by shielding views of the yard and limiting the view of residents at the facility. Again, for this one, the finding for SEQA is that it is exempt pursuant to Section 15332 for infill development, because it's consistent with the general plan, it's within city limits, and it has no value for endangered species or habitat, and it can be adequately served by all required utilities and services. However, given the sensitive receptors or the residential uses on the other side of East Whitmore, staff did ask that the applicant prepare a noise study to determine whether the music use that was applied for would create a noise impact on those residents. The noise, the noise modeling found that during live music performances, noise levels could reach up to 64 dB at the property line. However, there is an existing, an existing ambient noise level of 78, with average noise levels of 72 to 75 dB throughout the day. So that existing noise comes from the ongoing traffic on Whitmore being a heavy corridor for vehicular travel. And with the music venue only operating at a 64 dB, it is below those existing levels. Further, there's been a condition of approval added to this one that it can only operate until 10:00 PM. So making sure that the venue is closed during lower noise ambient levels or times. So with this one, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission find the proposed project categorically exempt pursuant to a Class 32 exemption found in Section 15332 of SEQA Guidelines and further adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the Truck Stop GrubHub and Outdoor Music Venue with the associated parking, seating area, game area, live performance area, area commissary, and truck washing station located at 1379 East Whitmore Avenue. So that concludes my presentation. I believe that the applicant is here and can answer any questions, as well as myself and the city attorney as well.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any questions from the commission?
What's the ambient noise at the LT1 location currently without the stage? Without the music? The current noise level at LT1?
The noise level for the stage is at 64 dB. Is that what you're asking?
Oh, across the street on Whitmore by the residential homes?
Oh, so they measured up to 78 with the average being 72 to 75.
And that's without the music and everything?
That's from the street, yeah.
And then when you said 10:00 PM, is that just for music or that'll be the overall site? The music stop at 10:00 and then food later on, or everything closes at 10:00?
So the complete hours of operation are 10:00 PM full stop.
And that's consistent with the previous GrubHubs, correct? That's one we just approved 10:00 PM as well? Okay.
Yes.
And what about the parking spots? Number of parking spots?
Number of parking spots for this one is... Give me just one second. There is a total of 68 stalls. 50 are required, and this includes four ADA and six EV stalls.
Will still maintain the 2.5 ratio, similar?
Yes, because they're proposing 20 trucks. So that would be 45 stalls required.
On the topic of parking, if there is a, speaking to the applicant at the last meeting, it's probably going to be pretty rare for them to have a big occasion with live music, but will overflow parking be in that, the future lot there? Is that, so if you have overflow parking, you have no plan when it comes to that? You go ahead and step up here, sir.
Just like any other GrubHub or any type of thing, you know, we're just trying to fit the requirement. We've done a little bit more than that. Anything extra, you know, there'll be people that are Ubering. There's off-street parking, so you might have to walk a little bit to get in. But, um, yeah.
Mr. Beltran, is there any parking? Where would be the nearest parking for this location? Because you cannot park on Whitmore, correct?
Correct. You can't park on Whitmore, but on Sandpoint Drive, that cul-de-sac, you can park there. I believe that you can park on the North-South Street. Rockefeller Drive has some street parking on it. Obviously, it's, it's pretty limited just with driveways and those types of things, but there is some off-street parking around the area.
Just to confirm, how many people can fit in your, the venue area?
I'm assuming it'll be several hundred. Just, that's the, that's the ordinance that fire gives you, so they they'll have a certain amount that they require that you have a maximum capacity. So because of the size of it, you know, there'll be several hundred that can technically fit in it. As far as seating and that sort of thing, we haven't quite figured that out yet. But, you know, the, it's, it's hard to say, but per, per fire code and all that, I mean, it'll be several hundred.
So has that number been given to you yet?
So it's, it's an equation that you can
Okay.
can do. So it's the square footage and the use of the occupancy, and then that designates how many maximum you can have. Anything under that is fine.
Okay. So you're, you're saying tonight about 200 people?
Um, no, I'd say, I'd say it could be up to 500 potentially.
Okay, so up to 500?
Yeah. Maybe a little bit more, but yeah, several, several hundred for sure.
And again, how, how many large-scale events, I guess, would be in the foresight of the applicant?
I don't think this is considered like large-scale events. It's more of just family entertainment. So there's not going to be, I don't... So um, there's not going to be, I don't, there's no foreseen ticket sales or anything like that. It's just going to be something there, whether it's music or, or anything else. Um, but yeah, there's, there's nothing, nothing large scale at all.
Well, I guess large scale, I just mean five hundred people. If you, two hundred people's a lot.
If there's twenty trucks and you have a couple families of four, that's eight per truck. And then you have, you know, maybe a couple hundred or less seating capacity. So at any given time, I, I'm not quite sure. It just depends on, on the turnaround.
Okay, I guess my, I guess I'm thinking more of um the stage area if you have.
Oh, it's, it's, so it's just going to be a lawn area. Um, and there'll be games and stuff like that. Um, I don't know if you, you're familiar with Dust Bowl, but it's kind of that, that type of thing.
Okay.
Um, so that, that area is, I think, seventy by fifty feet. So um, you know, little, little smaller than this, this room. That's going to be the lawn. And then adjacent to that will be the covered patio or seating area.
And what sort of, I, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head, head around, what kind of events, I guess, would, would be worth um at this venue? Because that's part of this project. Um, is, can you give me any sort of?
I think the stage is just, you know, we, we want to, want some kind of backdrop, you know, whether it's, you know, showing movies on, at night for kids. Um, if there is like a local band that just has background music, uh announcements being said, stuff like that. But there's no intention of, you know, an event per se. So it's just kind of uh, just ambiance, um, just something to get the community.
You guys aren't going to bring like George Strait or anything like?
No, unfortunately, uh, I don't know if they can pull that one off.
Okay, maybe Greg's, Greg Scudder though, perhaps?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, okay, I, I am a little worried about the parking just, and again, I'm guessing I'm just having a hard time with, if they have a large-scale, in my opinion, event of two hundred people, three hundred people, where's this overflow parking going to go? I guess in my opinion, they, Mr. Beltran, could they park cars on this empty lot there? If you had a major overflow parking?
Well, I, I don't believe that actually city ordinance allows for having parking on gravel or dirt. Um, so I don't, I wouldn't want to suggest that by any means. I mean, I, I guess when it comes down to an event uh on a Saturday or Sunday, you, you're generally going to have most of those businesses that are closed eh i- in theory. Um, so you'd have technically a little bit more street parking over there. Uh, but other than the street parking, I can't see that there's really any other places to park as far as, as far as overflow goes.
All righty. Any other questions for the applicant while he's up here? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public.
Excuse me, sir. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Aisegna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann. Any members of the public?
Don Warren, City of Series. First of all, I think the applicant should be able to answer your questions and give you some firm numbers before you, he asks you to approve his uh project. He can't tell you how many people are going to be there. How is he going to hire security to govern those people? Where are these people going to park? You want them in your front yard, parking on a side street if you happen to live there? They're going to have a bar, alcohol. And I know that it's regulated that you have to have a certain number of security officers. At least the city does, requires it. El Remito Market are uh, uh, out there on Crow's Landing Road, the uh, Flea Market has to have a big number of security officers, uh depending upon the number of people that they're going to have there. And they had a lot of regulations regarding music and decimal levels and things. None of that is described here. You can't tell me that traffic is going to mask out music that travels through the air at, at night. And it's going to be allowed till ten PM twenty-four seven? I mean, if you lived across the street there, you wouldn't want to hear music every day of the week until ten o'clock at night past your bedtime. Now, we're talking a couple of different things here. A bar, a music venue, and a grub hub. Music venue is a separate item altogether. It's not included. It's not allowed in the ordinance that was passed in December of, of twenty twenty-three. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three one oh eight oh. Uh, it's chapter ten, Mobile Food Vendors. The purpose of this chapter is uh establish a permitting and regulatory program for food vendors operating from motor vehicles. Nothing in here about music venues. Music venues are separate items altogether and should be addressed to you in a different uh CPU. And so that's something you should consider. I think this needs to be sent back to the drawing board uh and parking needs to be addressed. Each one of those mobile food vendors is going to have two employees inside of it. Okay, and there's going to be other employees there as well. So when you have twenty vendors, uh twenty vans, that's forty people there, forty cars in the parking lot already. The one over by Moore Road is only going to have about five parking stalls available for uh, for customers. When you, when you fa- factor in the, the employees, because those trucks are parked there overnight. The employees drive there every day and go to work. Okay? And so each employee is going to be bringing their own car. So do the math that way. I think you should consider a no vote on this specifically because the music venue is not addressed. It's not allowed and it can't be part of a grub hub because music's not allowed with mobile food, food vendors. It's a disguise to put something where something is not supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else for public comment?
If the entertainment was to be like no more than once a week and if the people that are employed there, I'm sure they'll find a place to park. A lot of people can shuttle. People would seem to find the answers to the problems that have been brought up. We keep turning down businesses, we're going to be in trouble. My only concern is using the word grub hub. I, you know, I'm like a dog with a bone. This is, it's a no-no. But on everything else, I don't see a problem with this place. If the music is kept at a certain decimal and the parking, people, they'll figure this out. And who would want to go into a business if they thought it was going to fail? I, I think we need to let it go, let it go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Anybody else for public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised at this time.
All right, go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission for further discussion. Um, some of the points raised up in public comment, can we touch on the food vendor ordinance as it relates to music?
Sure. Um, I think there was a little bit of confusion um with the entitlements for the, the El Remetito or the, the Flea Market you guys have there? Um, who had received multiple conditional use permits. I think one of them was specifically music-related. Um, while you can do it that way, you can also combine everything into one conditional use permit, and that's what we're doing here. So music isn't by right in this um, for this property, but you can add it to the conditional use permit without a problem.
So can the other grub hubs that we've approved in the past, the previous two, can they come back on their CUP and request the addition of music and/or alcohol?
Uh, they, they, if, they could request a change to their CUP, but that would be looked at as a separate decision. You know, um, it, it, entitling this, this business with that doesn't automatically require you to entitle them with it as well.
The other ones?
Right.
Any other questions from commission?
You already have, do you already have a ABC license?
I do have one question about security. Is that something the city provides? Or is that something that will be kind of a, a pooled venture by the vendors?
If you can come up to the mic, sir.
Sorry, thank you.
Um, I believe that will be um with the owners. And um, it'll be fenced and gated around the hallway. Um, and so that type of thing has been um considered.
Just to clarify on that note, if I can, with the ABC license, the alcohol and beverage control license, anything that is required from that will be required of the holder of that license, not the city to do that.
So, because some typical bars, they don't require security, so we wouldn't be able to enforce security. Is that something ABC would have to do or is that something part of our?
So if it's a requirement for ABC, they can do it with a conditional use permit. That's a discretionary permit. It can be added.
And I'm just curious about the process of adding that. Would that come back to us here in this body? Or would it be a, a full city council? Or is that more of a vendor question?
So um, Thomas, please jump in if I say anything incorrect. But you can on record approve the CUP with the addition of X condition. And if the applicant is not in favor or agreeable to that, they can appeal that, that decision to city council.
I got a question. Is the property totally uh fenced?
Yes.
It will be totally enclosed?
Parking lot and everything, yes.
And I just want to confirm, were public notices sent out to nearby residents? Or property owners?
Yes.
Um, I guess my other, back to the um, I guess parking of it. Um, has the fire marshal or Modesto Fire, has anybody signed off on this project as is?
Yeah, so the project was routed to all of the partner agencies, including fire. When this project comes back with improvement plans, it will have to go through a final fire inspection and, and be signed off before they get their certificate of occupancy.
So at that time, we would know how many, what's the maximum capacity? Or, or I guess why is that number not included in, in this uh plan?
So you're, you're talking specifically for the number of people for the entertainment or the max capacity?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so that number is going to be dictated by the fire code. It does exist. I don't know why we don't know it at this time. Um, and it'll just be whatever for the indoor and shaded area that's allowed will be the max capacity permitted.
So that number does exist. We just don't know what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other question? Where are you guys at on the security? Would you like to add that provision? I know you asked a question about it.
So, yeah, same. Um, I would say if we were going to motion it, then I would like a condition to, for security to be required in the event they do decide to serve alcohol.
At all times?
As long as alcohol is.
Does he, go ahead and repeat your full motion, Rogers?
Oh, a motion to approve application twenty-four dash forty-five for truck stop grub hub with the condition if alcohol is to be served, security will be provided for the general public at the, at the location.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor. Um, I want to continue discussion um about the, the venue of it. Um, is there something we can do when it, when it relates to if they're going to have a big event? Notices to the folks that live on um Whitmore there? Because they will obviously be impacted by it.
I believe so. But again, Thomas, please jump in if I say anything incorrectly. I would just encourage the commission to make a very clear um condition. So if, like, what's a big event? Like define that somehow and define how far or who gets the notices. Like a three hundred foot radius, one hundred feet, a big event is.
See, and that's where I guess I'm just having a hard time because I don't know what the limit is. So if we're talking five hundred, we're talking two hundred, that's a pretty big jump. Um, but again, they can't go past that ten PM mark no matter what. They'd have to do a new CUP for a, you know, certain event or whatever.
Yeah, their ten PM is the hard stop, no matter what. And with the conditional use permit being a discretionary action, that's why we're here tonight. At, if at any time they are out of compliance with, with their conditions, and that includes ten oh one or overflow parking on private property that's not theirs or anything that's not self-contained in their proposal, that is grounds to bring it back for their, for like reconsideration.
Mr. Beltran, can you repeat those, the overflow parking? What did you suggest on the, as far as the streets go? I have the map pulled up, so I was curious.
So the, the streets are, wherever there is legal parking on a street, anybody can park there. Um, that's, and that's whether it's during business hours or weekends. If there's street parking available, there's street parking available. Uh, I believe in our ordinance, we don't allow parking on dirt or gravel. It has to be paved out. Um, but I'd have to, I would have to actually look at what that ordinance actually states with regards to overflow parking.
Because I would imagine folks would probably park on Rockefeller Drive and Sandpoint Drive opposed to the other side of East Whitmore. I believe that. I think that business is not gated off, so I guess they could park there. Again, I, I'm just a little concerned about, you know, they have five hundred people or, or even two hundred, I. So. And also how this impacts the nearby residents. That's why I just kind of thrown out the idea of if we require them to give notice of, and again, I'd have to rely on city staff as far as what's appropriate when it comes to the nearby um residents and businesses as well because their parking would be impacted, whether it's, you know, after five PM or not. I guess what city, so we can do that, though. We can request that they send out notices for events over two hundred people. They're having a planned event for two hundred people or more.
So you can, but with something like that, I think it would be very difficult to enforce because how do they know? If it's free events, how do they know how many people are going to show up or not?
Yeah, correct.
Might encourage if they were, I know the applicant said they're not doing ticket events, but attaching it to some kind of metric that can be quantifiable. And if you're doing this kind of event, then you have to notify these people.
That makes sense. Any other thoughts?
I mean, the only other thing is unless you want to reduce a couple of vehicles and say you need dedicated parking for employees.
For food, food vendors, do they typically show up in the food truck or do they park their own vehicle? Jolene, you, you leaning on you?
So, mobile food vendors will show up in their, in their mobile food vendors. So usually it's two workers per mobile food vendor.
Okay. Security guard may take up a spot, though.
So just be, you know, that, the, I believe the applicant, when it comes to the music or the venues, it's not a every day. Um, this is a family, I believe it's when it was brought to us, it was like a family gathering. We're back of music. And so potentially with that many food trucks, if you average, you know, two, three people per food truck on every given day, you're going to get that huge number. Um, it is a benefit to those individuals that want to start a brick and mortar. Um, just to, we have available for twenty spots in the city. We actually have, I think there's like eleven or twelve that have been approved. We have eight that are actually functioning um because the mobile food vendor ordinance that we have is very tight. And so these mobile food vendors are actually looking for a spot. Um, and so with the approval of it, we will eventually have individuals. We have two right now that um started at mobile food vendors that are brick and mortars in the city of Series, so we would love to see more.
Well, again, I, I think it's a great project and it's very unique to Series, which um I think the venue aspect, um giving families somewhere to go um presents appeal for me. Um, I do have. I do have a hard time on the parking and the fact that, that I don't have a, an official capacity level. But if city staff is saying that will be, we know the number, we just don't know it tonight, the number exists. But it will be approved once this goes through, correct?
It'll have to be signed off by the fire chief, yes.
All right, so we do have a motion on the, on the floor. Want to go ahead and repeat that one more time, Vice Chair?
Yep, so motion to approve application twenty-four forty-five for conditional use permit with the condition if alcohol will be sold, that security will be higher, uh, security will be required for the sale of the alcohol.
Go ahead and second that motion.
Would, would we be able to have clarity on the number of security guards that you'd like?
Is there a standard that we have in place?
Typically, with other businesses, I've seen one, but those are for smaller businesses. But I think, you know, it would be good to specify.
Is, I know when we hold events here at the community center, there's a standard one per X amount of attendance. What's that standard? I think it's like one for fifty or like one for a hundred or something.
That would be the proper motion to set them.
I think we'll try and look it up really quick.
Okay.
But the only thing I would caution with that is, again, until they show up, there's no, like, it's not ticketed. There's no way to know how many people. So I think maybe setting certain days have more than one.
If we have sixty parking spots, we can kind of use that if we want to use it as a guidance going forward is the number of parking spots.
But I think as, as the gentleman pointed out, they're going to have, say, movie and, you know, that may be a, I don't think you need security for that, but they are going to have planned events. May not be ticketed, but they are going to have planned events. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, again, event, it's, you know, just hiring a local band to come.
Correct.
Whatever, yeah.
Exactly, thank you. So I think on nights like that is when you need to follow the ratio of people. But again, it's free, so it's hard to dictate how many people are going to show up. So I think that's where the dilemma is at.
Best way to put it, I mean, were we able to pull that up, what we use here at the community center? I mean, sixty parking spots, three people per, I'd say one eighty, one hundred and eighty people you're looking at, maybe. Right? I'd say minimum, I'm thinking minimum two.
But that's all, you're too secure.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Because again, that's just putting a further expense on them.
Can it be a weekend versus weekday thing? I mean.
Could be a Friday, Saturday thing. Sir, would you happen to know if these quote-unquote planned events, would they happen on a Friday or Saturday?
Yeah, I mean, potentially that, but there's, there's nothing set in stone. It's, again, it's just, we want to be able to have that capability of doing it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think Friday and Saturday would be the proper. But again, it's finding out what the ratio and.
If we don't have to set a ratio, can we say something like along the lines that they will provide it? And then, you know, if something, let's say something happens, but readjust it once they open to reassess what it is?
If, if you say they will provide security, they'll provide one security guard, so you might as well say we'll provide one security guard.
Okay, provide adequate security for the general public, the public attending the event.
It's a, that's a little difficult to enforce as, but, you know, I, I would suggest Friday and Saturday have one security guard if you want them to have security.
I think Friday, Saturday is, is good. But your, your motion was for any time alcohol is being served, so. Do you happen to know if alcohol is going to be served throughout the day, when the functioning hours?
I would imagine there's going to be a time, because if it opens at ten and there's breakfast, I don't think.
So how about, can we, I guess, add to this approval? When they have functioning hours of when those things are going to be set in stone, that it comes back to us and we could then approve how many security, security guards and et cetera, or no?
I am going to defer to the city attorney on that one. So the question is to reconsider security at the time when the ABC license is underway?
Correct, and operating hours as far as when alcohol is going to be served at the venue.
I, I think you're going to have trouble reopening this CUP. This is a land use entitlement and coming back to it to re-contemplate things is not exactly appropriate in this instance.
I have hearts.
They just go with, they need security if they're going to be selling alcohol and leave it up to the side.
So that means seven days a week they have to have security if they're serving alcohol, full business hours, so, I mean.
Their liability, right?
Their liability. We'll just edit that they need security if they get approved for an ABC license.
At least one security, or just you want to leave a security?
That means more than zero, so we'll leave it at that, and that way we're not dictating a number.
Okay. All right, go ahead and repeat that motion for the third time.
Motion to approve application twenty-four forty-five conditional use permit for truck stop Grubhub and outdoor music venue with the condition that if an alcohol ABC license is approved, that they will provide adequate security during the times that alcohol will be served.
I'll go and second that motion. Can we go to roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Jamu?
Aye.
Press and Condit?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
And Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes three, one with one absent.
Okay, go ahead and move on to item five, turn it over to city staff.
All right, good evening commissioners for a third time. The final item on the agenda this evening for your consideration is twenty-four dash thirty-three SPA for site plan approval, which is the Tenth Street Multifamily Site Plan. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval to construct a multifamily residential development on a lot that is approximately point six, seven acres. The project will consist of two new two-story triplex structures, the retention of an existing single-family dwelling, and the construction of a new detached garage. The development also includes associated site improvements such as parking, one-car garages for each of the units, and six-foot masonry wall along the perimeter, landscaping driveways and trash enclosures. So on your screen there is the project site. To the north is multifamily residential, but to the south, east, and west is all existing single-family residential. So the subject property is between Tenth and Ninth Street, and then kind of nestled between Roding and Don Pedro there. You can see on the regional map there on the bottom left corner. The current land use designation is medium-density residential. So highlighted in yellow there is the subject property. A multifamily development that includes triplex units and a single-family residence is considered appropriate within this land use designation. Although existing uses are primarily single-family, the site is mainly surrounded by the MDR land use designation and is proposed in conformance with that land use and meets several of the general plan goals and policies. The site is zoned R three, which is also indicative of medium-density residential. The zone district permits a density of seven to twelve dwelling units per acre. The proposed development includes seven total units because we are considering the existing single-family with the new triplex development, which equates to approximately ten point four dwelling units per acre. So even though multifamily is a permitted or principal use within the R three zone district, it is required to come before the commission for site plan approval pursuant to Series Municipal Code eighteen point ten point zero six zero I. Here is the exhibit of the landscape plan. The applicant is proposing landscaping in all of the setback areas. It is being proposed in a combination of trees, shrubs, and ground cover, and there is also some landscape cobblestone pavers. Again, this project is also exempt from CEQA pursuant to section one-five-three-three-two in fill development because it is consistent with the general plan. The development is within city limits, and the project has no value for habitat or endangered species, and it can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. So to conclude for this one, staff does recommend that the planning commission do find the proposed project categorically exempt pursuant to section one-five-three-three-two and adopt a resolution approving site plan approval for the seven-unit development on approximately zero point six, seven acre lot at three, four, four, three, Tenth Street. With the addition, so there is a change to the conditions on this one. So with the addition to add one condition, that the location of the trash enclosure be approved by the city engineer and the city's waste management company prior to final approval. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, any initial questions by the commission?
Is the access, all right, going into apartment A, B, and C? That was something looked at last time. Is that the reason they looked at moving the trash can, or that was made a condition?
Or you're saying why the addition of the condition?
Hmm.
We just, that stretch there is kind of a long way to back out a trash enclosure, and we just don't want to approve it unilaterally without the waste management company looking at it.
I mean, you're, sorry to just add on to that, it's just the size of the truck, basically, just to make sure it can get back there?
Yeah, because that stretch, Julian, I don't know if we can go back to the site plan. So it's the drive approach to the south there. And I think it's like two hundred feet. So he can back into like the parking area to kind of T-bone out, but it's still over a hundred feet. So just making sure they're comfortable with it.
Is there any way, I know the plans are done, but any way to shift it? Because there's, it looks like twenty-three feet of space between the wall and the edge of the building. If it was shifted down, say, twelve feet, and then it's a U-turn, a U-turn, like a hammerhead turn, you enter one way, exit the other way around the homes, or is, that's not possible for design?
To, to wrap like driveway all around. I think that it's space-constricted, and we are requiring that the applicant provide a new detached garage to bring the existing single-family into conformance with current standards. So it would require us to remove that two-car garage that we're requiring of them.
What if they made that a double-story house and the two-car? I mean, just because, I mean, I'm just looking at the flow, it just kind of seems tight. But I mean, you guys think the flow is fine?
So it's, it is going to be tight for the, the trash truck, for standard cars. They're going to be pulling into the parking, and they'll be able to turn around in the parking area.
But like, if you're parked in, say, apartment C, right? You pulled into it, if you got two cars behind you, that's twenty-five feet, okay?
Yeah, there, there's twenty-five feet.
Yeah, okay.
What about the entrance and exit of a, of a fire truck or fire engine?
Yeah, so same thing, the, the project was routed to Fire for comment, and they, all of their comments are included in the conditions of approval. So with the hose length and pull, they feel adequate.
Do we know who from Fire signs off on these projects?
It's going to be tight.
I don't. I have the memo from Fire of who provided the comments, and I'm not sure who does the final sign-off.
But somebody does give the comments?
Yeah, somebody, yeah, the comments that we get in the conditions of approval come directly from the appropriate.
And who is that?
I'll have to check my email. Sorry, I don't have everybody's name.
Oh, no worries, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and, and one of the comments is that the fire lane and turnaround has been met. I think it's Mick Ferson, is there somebody named Mick Ferson?
Jeff McKean?
Jeff McKean. I knew it was a McP.
You're close, okay. Any other comments from the commission? I, I do kind of share the thoughts of, whether it's the garbage truck or the, or fire truck or fire engine.
The question, so I'm looking at the map. The line that's separating the two driveways, that's just a painted line, it's not a curb, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's just a valley gutter.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's wider than it looks.
Yeah, it's that, it's that whole width.
We'll go ahead and take this out to the public. Any members of the public would like to comment on this item?
John Warren, City of Series. Nice project, but how are you going to get the hook-and-ladder fire truck in there? And once, once it's in there, how are you going to get it out? There's one way, oh, the map isn't up there. I have one mine, I'm looking here. From my diagram that I'm looking at, it's a twenty-foot driveway back to where the dumpsters are. And then you have to make kind of a really tight right-hand turn to go over to fight a fire at apartment A. How do you get a hook-and-ladder truck in there? And then how do you get it out? There's no U-shaped driveway in and out where you can, where a lot of these apartments like this are. And when I look at my measurements here on the map, where you have those little sidewalk squiggly lines there, from there to the wall is twenty feet. So the entrance going in from the street, that driveway is only twenty foot wide, and a fire truck, I think, is probably about ten foot wide. So my question is, and there's no firemen here, how do you get a hook-and-ladder truck in there or a brush truck? And what if you need three fire trucks? Where do they go? How do you get three fire trucks in there? That would be my concern, and I wouldn't, I hate to see garbage trucks backing out on the city streets blindly. They do it over here by Garrison and Moffett, that new project that was allowed to be built there with one way in and one way out. The gardener, for gosh sakes, how does he get his little pickup truck and his trailer back out on the, on the main street? I mean, those things should be taken into consideration. I know we want to do away with parking and have people drive bicycles and things today. And, and when we have large events, people got to walk miles and miles and miles because there's no parking. I think we really need to consider that. Parking here is not a problem. You've got one per unit, and then you have some extra parking spaces. I think that's really a great thing. But I don't think it's really good when the fire truck, if he goes in there, how does he get out? How's that hook-and-ladder truck get in there? Something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands raised on Zoom. However, I did receive an email I'd like to read. This email came from Nick Eckenweiler. He's the staff attorney with the California Housing Defense Fund. His email says, "Good afternoon, the California Housing Defense Fund submits the attached public comment concerning agenda item number five at today's planning commission meeting." Thank you. The letter says, "Dear Series Planning Commission, the California Housing Defense Fund, Cal HDF, submits this letter to remind the city of its obligation to ab-" to abide by all relevant state laws when evaluating the proposed seven-unit housing development project at three four four three tenth street. These laws include the Housing Accountability Act, HAA, AB one thirty, and California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA guidelines. The HAA provides the project legal protections. It requires approval of zoning and general plan compliant housing development projects unless findings can be made regarding specific, objective, written health and safety hazards, Government Code Section six five five eight nine point five. The HAA also bars cities from imposing conditions on the approval of such projects that would render the project infeasible or reduce the project's density unless, again, such written findings are made. As a development with at least two-thirds of its area devoted to residential uses, the project falls within the HAA's ambit and it complies with local zoning code and the city's general plan. The HAA's protections therefore apply, and the city may not reject the project except based on health and safety standards as outlined above. Furthermore, if the city rejects the project or impairs its feasibility, it must conduct, quote, "a thorough analysis of the economic, social, and environmental effects of the action," end of quotes. Furthermore, the project is exempt from state environmental review under the Class thirty-two CEQA categorical exemption in filled development projects pursuant to section one five three three two of the CEQA guidelines. As the project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as the applicable zoning designation and regulations. The proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses. The project site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. Project is also eligible for a statutory exemption from CEQA pursuant to AB one thirty, which was signed into law on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and effective immediately. Assembly Bill Number one thirty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, Regular Session, Section seventy-four. Case law from the California Court of Appeal affirms that local governments err and may be sued when they improperly refuse to grant a project a CEQA exemption or streamlined CEQA review to which it is entitled. As you are all aware, California remains in the throes of a statewide crisis-level housing shortage. New housing such as this is a public benefit. It will increase the city's tax base. It will bring new customers to local businesses, and it will reduce displacement of existing residents by reducing competition for existing housing. While no one project will solve the statewide housing crisis, the proposed development is a step in the right direction. Cal HDF urges the city to approve it, consistent with its obligations under state law. Cal HDF is a five oh one C three nonprofit corporation whose mission includes advocating for increased access to housing for Californians at all income levels, including low-income households. You may learn more about Cal HDF at www-calhdf.org. Sincerely, Dylan Casey, Cal HDF Executive Director, and James M. Lloyd, Cal HDF Director of Planning and Investigations.
Alrighty, thank you, Ann. Go ahead and close the public comment period, bring it back to the commission.
What is the property, what is the property to the north of that? Are those single-story units or two-story units?
I believe they're single-story. And they appear, and I don't know if anybody else has a little bit more history on them, but they look like they're attached, single-family units, but all on one lot, so it operates as a multifamily development. But they all have like their own garage and entrance and everything.
Has the fire department already signed off on this?
The fire department provided comments that have been incorporated into the conditions of approval. So once the entitlements are approved, it goes to final improvement plans, and the fire department will be part of those final inspections as well. And just to reiterate, one of the comments that the fire department did include is condition number twenty-four, that fire lane and turnaround has been met. So I'm not an expert on the fire code. I rely on the fire department, and if they don't see an issue with it, I can't see an issue with it.
Um, the applicant is here. Would you like to comment on, on anything as, as it relates to the project? Yeah, if, if you do, yeah, come onto the, to the mic and state your name.
Hello, my name is Elias Cortez. I'm one of the property owners. Um, as far as the detached garage and like the wraparound, as a property owner, we wouldn't be against removing that to provide like a wraparound and have the garbage enclosure there more towards the front end of the property as opposed to having it on the back end. Just wanted to put that out there, if that's something that you guys would like to, to see rather than where it's at right now. That's probably it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Beltran, just a question on the addition to the CUP, um, as it relates to the trash. Are we assuming Bertolati is going to reject this current proposal?
No, we don't, we don't assume that they'll reject it. Um, when we look at things, I, I like to see no more than about a hundred and fifty feet uh, for a fire truck to turn around, just for liability purposes. Um, you know, generally they're picking up these garbages early in the morning. Um, you know, you just, we look at those types of things. We want to have those, um, those conversations to make sure that everybody is comfortable because backing up something that big is, i- is a lot sometimes. So, um, we just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. Um, I would like to see it moved a, a little closer to the front. Um, I think there's ways in this layout to actually have it, it moved, but we can work with the engineers and the owners in order to, uh, in, in order to make that happen.
Thank you for that. I, I understand that, that fire approved this. Um. I, I don't know a time, and again, I've watched a lot of city council meetings, and I've been on the commission for over a year. I don't know a time they haven't approved a project. Um, so I, I have some, we already have, you know, the, the trash in question. Um, I know what the report states, but for me to be comfortable, I would like Jeff McKinn or who is, who's the person who signed this?
Jeff McKean, probably. I, I don't know if that's exactly who it was, but that's generally who is, does our fire inspections and those types of things.
I, I think having a fire personnel present for this discussion would, would be very vital. Um, with that said, the, the applicant has already stated there may be room to, um, or redesign on, on some of this. Um. So I, I, it's, it's up to us if, if we want to, I guess, push this to a future planning commission, I guess reject the item as is and uh, go to a redesign of the, the plan. I guess what would be staff's guidance, as I think many of us up here have, have an issue with, um, the entrance and exit, um, as it relates to the garbage and, and, um, fire.
So again, I'll have to defer to the city attorney for more comment, but as a site plan approval and not a CUP, so not discretionary, as long as it meets the development standards as outlined in the municipal code, there is kind of limited wiggle room. But I want, I mean, if there's flexibility, I want the commission to be aware of that, so I will let Thomas speak.
Yeah, I think you do have to, um, take into account that letter that you received, uh, because there is heightened scrutiny on, um, planning commission decisions when it comes to housing. Uh, it sounds like to me that there is some flexibility in the, um, final uh, location of the trash and, and that will have some impact on, um, the, the access for the fire department. Um, but if you were to deny this, like, like that letter said, you would have to do that on like a public safety consideration. Fire would meet, should meet that, but, um, I would advise you to be cautious.
Correct. And in that letter, it states safety standards, um, would be a part of the denial. So I think the entrance and exit of, of a fire truck, fire engine falls under that category of safety standards.
Sure, but you, you also have to balance that with the fact that you do have a sign-off by the fire department. Um, so, you know, it's getting into a, a review of your discretion.
Yeah. Well, again, I, I would be fine with just delaying this and having a fire personnel here. So we pay Minister Fire a lot of money, so I think they, they could be present at a meeting. Um, so I would be fine with that as well. So that's an option, or we deny this and ask the applicant to do a redesign, moving the um, entrance more to, towards the front.
I mean, it looked like the applicant was okay with moving the location of the trash enclosure, so can we get the, an updated drawing? And then we can.
Would that just be postponing this, or if there's a redesign element, do we deny this?
So because this is permitted by right, I don't think you can deny it. I understand your concerns with fire and wanting somebody fire here, but I would very strongly advise you against denying it and find something outside of just outright denial. Um, in terms of the redesign of the trash enclosure, that is typically something that can happen during plan check. That wouldn't necessarily come back unless the commission were to do that, um, ask for it to come back before moving forward. But again, I, I, I find the, the flexibility for site plan approvals relatively limited and, and I just want to make sure that that kind of discretion and disclosure is out there.
So would we perhaps do like a conditional approval with?
No, because this is a, a site plan approval. It's not a CUP. I guess on that, so we cannot just delay this and have them do a redesign? Even if the applicant's willing to?
Yeah, I think you can delay. I don't, I don't think you can outright deny it.
Okay. So I get, I guess my motion would be to delay this to a future planning commission meeting with the understanding that the applicant will present a new site plan, uh, approval pro- proposal.
You, you don't want to continue it. Right? Not you and.
Continue it, correct.
Thank you.
Did the applicant want to? Yeah, come on up.
Logan, so the current site plan has been reviewed by the planning department, I believe, on two plan checks. So everything that they requested of us to be drawn in the way that the site plan is currently set up has been at their request. My comment of our desire to maybe make a change or anything of that nature was if it was required. But being that the planning department is supporting its current site plan and that the fire department also signed off on it, I think that it should be, it's fair that it gets approved at this stage instead of getting delayed or denied.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
If there's any more context or color I can add to that, um, the project does, so when it gets submitted, it gets routed for comment. And if there's significant corrections that are required before it can come before the commission, it goes back to the applicant for redesign. And this is an example of that. This is the second submittal. They did receive a comment letter that required redesign items, um, and they complied with those items. And so I just wanted to kind of add that context. It has been reviewed two times, a full route by Public Works, Fire, Engineering, Planning.
So I get, I guess I'm having a hard time with that. If it's been reviewed so many times, why do we add an additional CUP on it? As it relates to the garbage. Mr. Beltran stated tonight that he feels more comfortable with a hundred feet backup, and this is two fifty, is that correct?
Correct. It was actually a comment that was missed. Um, we would have requested it in plan review when we, when we went to plan review. Um, and so it's just something that, in transparency, that we wanted to put out there. That's really the only reason that it, that it was, that it was requested that we add that. If it wasn't added, we would still look at it during plan check, regardless of if it's a condition or not. Um, and, and the condition doesn't state that they have to move it. The condition just states that, hey, they're going to, we're going to work between us, Bertolati, and the engineers and owner to see if there's a better spot for it to go. Um, one thing that, that was requested, uh, by the engineering department also was the truck turning movements. Um, there, there is a plan in there that has the truck turning movements to show, you know, where, how, how their radius works on the, uh, on, on their, as far as their turning radius goes. So that trucks backing in, backing out, whether they're garbage trucks, fire trucks, those types of things. Um, if they were to run a, obviously, a truck turning radius on a fifty-three footer, they, they would never make it. You'd be taking out all kinds of stuff. So these are, these are different things that, that are requested, that fire sees, that everybody sees, so that way, um, and they're, and the truck turning movements that are shown in CAD and in a program called Auto Turn, those are generally the two programs that are used, um, are, are very accurate, generally conservative, meaning that you're, essentially, you're going to have a more room than even what the truck turning template actually states. Um, so, so all of these types of things are routed to all of the departments. I would say that engineering and fire generally are the ones that look at truck turning movements just because we know that we're having to deal with larger vehicles coming onto the site. Um, but it, that, that template is in there also, so ju- just for clarification.
Can I ask who missed that?
Excuse me?
Who missed that in the, in the report as it, as it relates to the hundred feet versus two hundred fifty?
Um, no, it's not really a standard. It's just something we like to see. So it, it just, it didn't get commented on. Um, so i- the engineering department, I mean, I'm, I'm in charge of the engineering department, so by, whether it was my staff, it was, it was missed by our department. Um, like I said, it's, it's mainly just in transparency. It's not something that we need a condition for. It's just so that you guys are aware that we will work with the applicant to make that backing distance shorter.
So things can be missed. Want that kind of out there. It was signed off by the engineers department, but things were missed, so. Open, keep, keep going with, uh, comments from the commission on direction on this.
You know, I mean, if, if engineering signed off, fire signed off, right, taking it back to fire, I don't think they're going to change it because they've already signed off. For us to take a look at it, right? I don't think there's much we can do if we're, everyone signed off.
Well, we're the final sign off.
Yeah, but we need, yeah.
It's, again, it's, it's tough for me because it's a good infill project. Um, but I wish somebody was, from fire was here, um, and, and there's, um, just concerns over the entrance and exit, so. I just, I, I don't, for safety standards of the public and folks who are going to live there, I don't, I just don't feel comfortable voting yes on this, so. Or if, again, I'd be open to delaying this item and having somebody from fire here. Be open to that as well.
One way or another, let's just put it in motion and then we can go further, so. I motion to approve application twenty-four dash thirty-three with the cited approval. That's been approved by engineering and fire.
I'll second it.
You get a roll call, man?
Yes. Commissioner Jamu?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chairperson Condon?
No.
Motion carries three, one with one absent.
Okay, move on to new business, public meetings, unfinished business, and then matters initiated by the planning commission staff.
So we have your referral item from our last session. Uh, so that referral item you requested, uh, the planning commission discuss, uh, making a recommendation to the city council to contemplate, uh, the number of conditional use permits issued to allow, um, mobile food vendor parks within the city. Uh, now, uh, just to give you some context, we can, you can discuss this and then make a, a minute order to make that recommendation.
So to confirm, are we going to discuss this night, or does it need to go to a?
No, it's been noticed.
No, it's been noticed and you can discuss it now.
Okay. I guess first, I would, I would like to know from staff why this wasn't on the first, um, agenda posted. It was amended, was there a reasoning on that, or?
So I can speak on my understanding, um, there's a lot of transition happening, and I think it was probably just a misunderstanding.
Okay.
Something that fell through.
Okay, um, so again, my, we, we just approved the two, um, so now that totals three, uh, grub hub um, businesses in our city. So the idea for this referral was for us to discuss, um, the idea of making a recommendation to the city council uh, to review the number of grub hubs, uh, in our city. Um, so I see it as, uh, a couple scenarios that we could do, um. We could make a recommendation specifically to a number, four, five, ten. Um, or just get this on the city council's agenda for them to discuss and um, whether they give it to a subcommittee or make a recommendation themselves, at least the conversation is had, so. That was the point for this referral, and, um, I personally, I'm, I'm fine with either of the options, so just kind of want to get everyone's thoughts.
Yeah, I'm open to, um, giving it to the council, see if they want to put like a moratorium or some sort of limit on it.
Second emotion?
So you guys are good just making the recommendation for them to address it, whether it's by them or by a subcommittee?
Yeah, and if they don't want to, to put a limit on it, then they would just come back to see.
Correct, okay. Commissioner Johnson, you good with that? Okay, do we need a vote, or we kind of have consensus here, so?
Yeah, um, if you have, have a, a, a motion and a vote, and then we'll do it by minute order.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend that the Siri City Council review the number of grub hubs located within the city of Siri's. And they can make that decision themselves or by a subcommittee. First and second, we get a roll call?
Certainly. Chairperson Condit?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Jamu?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Motion carries four zero with one absent.
Do we have any reports? Commissioner City Staff? Mr. Beltran? Go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be on Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty-five, thank you.